All right, I understand that. Yeah, I need to.
She's getting better. The test results today were better. I'm not putting a lot of hope in it just yet, but you know, chemistry is coming back up to Bob, chemistry is back up to normal.
You ready?
Yeah.
Bob, you ready?
Ready.
Good evening. We will call the Burlington City Council September 2nd, 2014 meeting to order. Like, take this opportunity to welcome all of you here this evening. Would also like to remind you for, to silence all of your electronic devices. This time we'd call Mayor Proton David Huffman for Knight's invocation.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together this evening to handle the city's business. We pray that as we address the issues before, as we conduct ourselves in a civil manner and remain open-minded to one another's ideas and positions. We ask for your guidance. May the actions that we take as a board this evening be in the best interest of the citizens of our town. Amen.
First item on the agenda is a proclamation. Hunger Action Month, September. At this time we'd recognize Ms. Kim Crawford and Shannon Smith to come forward, please. Proclamation proclaiming September 2014 is Hunger Action Month in the city of Burlington. Whereas hunger and poverty are public health issues of critical concern in the United States, state of North Carolina, and the city of Burlington, whereas September has been declared Hunger Action Month by Feeding America, the nation's largest domestic hunger relief organization, and whereas the second-largest food bank of Northwest North Carolina is Feeding America affiliate serving our community and with its partner, partners program in the city of Burlington is committed to engaging community members and organizations in addressing the problem of hunger and providing resources to meet the needs of our residents. Whereas inadequate nutrition diminishes the capacity of children to learn, exacerbates health conditions among seniors and others, and zaps the strength of working families. And whereas one of six residents of Northwest North Carolina is food insecure and the problem of hunger is even more significant among our children, whereas the city of Burlington recognizes the critical role of Second Harvest Food Bank of Northwest North Carolina and its partner programs in helping to meet the nutritional needs of our many in our community and wishes to encourage citizen involvement and in support of their work. Now therefore, I, Ronnie K. Wall, Mayor, do hereby recognize September as Hunger Action Month in the city of Burlington. Thank you, ladies. You do such an outstanding job. Take a few minutes to explain what you do and how it affects our community.
Well, well, thank you very much, Mayor Wallen, Councilman. We really appreciate this honor. It comes at a really good time for allied churches and of course, you know, we house the homeless and feed the hungry of Alamance County. We are the largest shelter of its kind, the largest food pantry of its kind, the largest community kitchen of its kind, and the largest resource center of its kind in Alamance County, all housed under one roof on 206 North Fisher Street. You know, it was exactly one year ago, next Tuesday, that we opened up our food pantry as a result of the largest food pantry in our county closing. We wouldn't be here today without the support of this allied community that we live in right now in Burlington and Alamance County. And so, this comes at a great time. We're honored to accept this on behalf of this community. And we do want to invite everybody to come to allied churches next Tuesday between four and six o'clock to celebrate the one year anniversary of our new food pantry. Anything?
Sure.
Anything?
We do serve about 2,000 people a month, so we're very excited and proud to be a part of this community and we appreciate your support. And please do come out next Tuesday to support with us. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the shortest amount of time I've heard.
Ronnie Ostrich is trying to make you proud.
He made it very proud, I might add. And thank you for the job that you do. The next proclamation will be a 9/11 moment of remembrance, September 11, 2014. At this time, I'd recognize Police Chief Jeff Smyth and Fire Chief Jay Smith. Proclamation proclaiming a moment of remembrance on September 11, 2014 in the city of Burlington. Whereas people across our great nation and the entire globe collectively witnessed an event of immense tragedy on September 11, 2001. The terrorist attacks took the lives of almost 3,000 innocent people on American soil. And whereas the events of that day instantly transformed the lives of Americans through both personal experience and unfamiliar sense of individual and national vulnerability, and whereas an unprecedented historic nexus of Americans arose from the tragedy, unifying the country in an outpouring of national pride, selflessness, generosity, courage, and service. Whereas many first responders and civilians tirelessly and courageously participated in dangerous rescue and recovery efforts, risking or forfeiting their lives for the safety of others. And whereas the brave men and women who serve in our nation's military were called upon to leave their families and risk their lives to fight and defend America. And whereas Wednesday, September 11, 2014, will be the 13th anniversary of the 9/11 tragedy. Now therefore, I, Ronnie K. Wall, Mayor of the city of Burlington, do hereby proclaim a moment of remembrance on September 11, 2014 in the city of Burlington. Chiefs, thank you. There are activities that will take place on the 11th.
Thank you. I know that we have a march that some of us will be partaking in, and there's a brief parade of sorts as emergency vehicles visit our elementary schools around the county. So there's several opportunities for people to, to remember. I think in the, in the days and weeks following 9/11, we saw a number of slogans, one of which was "We Will Never Forget." And so, it's important to us collectively, the firefighters and police officers, our men and women, do go in harm's way every single day for the citizens of this community. And it's great that the mayor and council, that you've taken this time to make sure that those words aren't hollow, that we really will never forget their, their personal and professional sacrifices. So on behalf of Chief Smith and myself and our men and women, thank you very much for this certificate here.
Thank you. Thank you for the job that you do daily. Next item on the agenda is a code of ethics disclosing conflict of interest. This time we'd recognize City Clerk Renee Ward.
Members of council, it's our responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest in matters that are before us. At this time, I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tenants' generalities.
None.
I'll be asking to recuse myself. One more last issue.
Next item is a preamble of minutes, August 19, 2014, city council meeting.
The move.
Second.
Got a motion to second. All in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Adoption of the agenda.
We adopt Knight's agenda.
Second.
Got a motion to second. All in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Consider the agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item 1A, to set a date of public hearing for September 16, 2014, for approval of the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for the Community Development Program Year 2013-14B. To adopt a resolution of intent to set a date of public hearing for October 7, 2014, to consider permanently closing Albright Avenue between Summers Avenue to the N.C., to approve a superseding memorandum of agreement between the city of Burlington, the Hall River Assembly, and Cape Fear River Watch to minimize sanitary sewer overflow and to ensure prompt public notification in the event potentially significant sanitary sewer overflows to the Hall River and its tributary. Excuse me. D, to approve a final change, Order Number 3 to the East Burlington Nutrient Removal Improvements to extend the contract time for 154 days with a final net reduction of $53,407.11 to the contract price. E, to approve a final plat for the Woods at Grove Park Townhomes, Phase 13. The property is located on north of South Medden Street and south of Trail 6, as shown on plans by Simmons Engineering Incorporated, dated July 22, 2014, and containing seven lots. F, to approve a final plat for the Woods at Grove Park Townhouses, Phase 14. The property is located north of South Medden Street, south of Trail 6, as shown on plans by Simmons Engineering Incorporated, dated July 22, 2014, and contains four lots. G, budget amendment 2015-16 Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant, spelled out in your agenda. H, budget amendment 2015-17 CDVG Home Program Loan Repayments, is spelled out in your agenda. Budget amendment 2015-18 Locker Room Upgrade Burlington Athletic Stadium, spelled out in your agenda.
Move with approval to consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion to second. All in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Unfinished business. Number two, a public hearing has been continued to consider rezoning from Marv 15 Residential District to CB Conditional Business District for the use of a Unified Business Development and CO&amp;I Conditional Office and Institutional District for the uses specified from the table of permitted uses under office and institutional zoning, with the exception of boarding houses and veterinary offices. Property is located east of University Drive, south of South Church Street, and west of Huffman Lane, as shown in the Alamance County Plat Book 76, page 238. An invalid protest petition has been received. This is continued from August 19, 2014, city council meeting. This time we'd recognize Ms. Nelson. Welcome, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This request has the recommendation from the staff as well as from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The proposed uses for this area meet the current land use plan, which calls for planned community mixed use. It's consistent with its surrounding uses, namely, the development to the west, the shops at Waterford. The plan also gained approval from the city's technical review committee. The use conditions have been amended slightly since our last meeting, and Mr. Lawson Brown is here to speak for the afternoon.
Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, it's my pleasure tonight to present this to you after multiple delays. And I'll talk a minute or two about those delays and what was going on with this particular request. It is my pleasure tonight to be representing Mr. Ed Tam and his company, Blue Wood Development, and he is here to answer any questions that, that I can't answer. This property came before the council as a request in either 2008 or 2009, as a much larger request. This has been scaled back considerably from that time period, and as Ms. Nelson has so aptly said, has the recommendation of the technical review committee that is composed of all of the departments that have to do with planning and zoning in the city. It has also, has a participation by representatives from the North Carolina Department of Transportation who have authority over University Drive in terms of the planning of that as well. As you know from the history of this request, and you know from my standard practice, we meet extensively with Ms. Nelson, Mr. Lee, and the other staff prior to bringing a petition for rezoning to the council and running it through the process. That's clearly what we did here. The last few months, we've met extensively with the neighbors and their council, Mr. Joe Kalow, and we appreciate the neighbors' concerns, and I have, we have tried to address, and I think we have addressed, every one of their concerns to the best that we possibly can. The request before you tonight's approximately six and a half acres. It's directly across from the Waterford Development, commercial development on University Drive. To the east of this property is a Glenwood acre subdivision that the neighbors that we met with over a period of months, if not years, about their particular concerns. Immediately to the north of this particular six and a half acres is a Blue Stream Restoration Area that presently has two ponds located on it. The Army Corps of Engineers has issued approval for Blue Stream Restoration, which will include several of the acres running from east to west. But again, that property is not a subject of this particular request. All you have before you tonight is approximately six and a half acres. On prior occasions, for the benefit of the neighbors, to the north and to the east, a lighting study was performed on this development. That was shared with the city staff, was also shared with the city council, and was shared with the neighbors as well. In addition to that, a noise study was conducted, and that was submitted to city staff and was submitted to the neighbors. And thirdly, a flood zone study was done, hydrological study was done, not only on the entire area, which was validated not only by the engineer that the developer secured, but was also validated by the engineer for one of the neighbors to the north. It was also validated by the city staff as well in the engineering department. In addition to the flood study or hydrological study for the entire drainage area, a particular study was done on the wells in the Glenwood Acres neighborhood. Results of that study were also shared with city staff. The results of that study were also shared with the neighbors. And I think not only was there not an absolute in anything scientific, what my client has agreed to, independent of this zoning request, will address any and all neighbor concerns. In addition to what those studies and the Blue Stream Restoration, I can honestly say in my 39 years of practice that this particular project has received more input from more professionals and scientists than any other project that I've done. I was involved in the largest development in Alamance County, 26-acre assemblage, 155 acres. We went through conditional zoning, adoption of the ordinance, when Mr. Harper was here with y'all's blessing. And I think I spent more time and effort and focus on this particular six and a half acres than I have on any other project that I've worked on in the brief time that I've been doing this. I lay the foundation of those studies to let you know that all of the, the concerns that were revealed by that have been addressed by this particular request. And the, I want to talk about the concerns of the Glenwood Acres neighbors. First and foremost, there is a four-acre-plus parcel of land along the east side of this property or properties that is not included in the request that you have before you. That area will remain R-15, and in essence is a buffer zone that is being created by the applicant concept builders and Mr. Tam, who has that property under contract and is the owner of the remaining property. In addition to that, you will see in the conditions, development conditions that we have set forth, we have added a six-foot fence along the property line on the west side of that residential area, the four and a half acres that is the buffer zone. We are proposing with, under agreement with the neighbors, that, that that six-foot fence would be, would be the buffer and would be along the property line. And in addition to that, the applicant has also agreed to a wall six feet in height that would further buffer the established residential neighborhood to the east. It is going to be a solid decorative modular panel wall, at least six feet in height, along the property line of the residential area budding to the east. And in addition to that, the applicant has agreed as one of the conditions to add a double row offset cryptomeria trees with separation of 10 to 15 feet of trees at a planting height of eight to 10 feet. That is far above what is required by the landscape ordinance for the city of Burlington, and that is done as additional buffering.
Let me interrupt you a second, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
You're telling me that there's going to be a fence, there's going to be a brick wall, and now we're going to put cryptomereons along the same run?
It's going to be not a fence, but a wall, a six-foot modular wall. No fence. The fence has gone away, and in place of that, the applicant has agreed to a six-foot modular paneled wall. And yes, sir, in addition to that, is agreeing to the...
How long a run is that wall going to be along the property line?
I'm estimating between the Derek property, which is to the northeast corner of what you see here, that it's approximately...
Eleven to 1200.
Eleven to 1200, 11 to 1200 lineal feet of wall, which is, again, pretty substantial expense. Let me speak just a minute about the conditional O&amp;I portion of this property. The maximum number of lots contained in that, and that's the southernmost lot that you see on the plan that you have there and that you can see on the screen. The maximum square footage of that will be 6,500 square feet, and all of the uses will be consisted with a table of permitted uses for the city of Burlington under office and institutional, with the exception of boarding houses. And there's some duplication of some concerns that the neighbors had. Veterinary offices are not typically allowed in O&amp;I, but we put it in there just to make sure that you and the neighbors in particular knew that. Now, the property to the north of there is shown as three lots. We're asking that it, that it be a maximum of four lots, and that's the conditional business portion of the property. The maximum square footage on each of those buildings will not exceed 40,000 per building. All the uses for the conditional business would be as per the city code with the exception of those numbered, excuse me, those listed exceptions, and there's a litany of those. And no adult bookstores or adult video stores, no adult cabarets, adult motels, boarding and rooming houses, churches, drive-in theaters, hill of forks, et cetera. Any business that dispenses or stores petroleum products, automotive laundry, et cetera. Those are not, some of those are not allowed in Unified Business Development in any event, but we listed those so that it would be out in the open that those, in fact, are objectionable not only to the neighbors but to the applicant. A number of other things contained in the development conditions that I would like to highlight, because I know that you've all had an opportunity to study this. The main feature of this traffic improvement will be the full signalization of the University Drive at Waterford. Presently, the property across the street is conditional business, and it is serviced by a traffic signal. That traffic signal on the east side, the applicant is a condition to this, and under the direction of DOT and the city of Burlington will make that a full-service, four-way stop intersection. And one of the stated conditions is that not only will the applicant do that, but the applicant will comply with all other North Carolina Department of Transportation requirements. So that is a major item that the developer will be addressing. Other conditions are that the applicant has agreed to is that none of the businesses operating on any of this property will operate from 11 o'clock PM till 6 o'clock AM in the morning. Another item is that all the signage will be monument signs, no higher than eight feet in height. The internal connector road that runs on the east side of this property and connects the four, the four lots shown there with a possible of five lots would be lit by lighting no higher than 12 feet in height. And as all of you know, the, the, that is along the road that is on, solely on the property that you have before you for the particular request. So, there is a substantial height difference, as you know, from having looked at the property. The far south end of the property is actually the low point, and the high point is, there's a substantial drop, not only from that point but from University Drive over to the established residences to the east. The property will have a right end on the southern portion of the property off University Drive with decal lanes as required by the Department of Transportation. There will be connectivity if, in the future, to the property to the north, but that would be under approval from the city. Individual site plans approval will be required for each of these buildings as they're put in. Stormwater will be addressed in strict accordance with the Jordan Lake rules and with all the other requirements that the city has. I want to take just a second, a few minutes, and not belabor this point, but we had multiple meetings with the neighbors, and Mr. Tam, on behalf of the developer, has signed an agreement agreeing to what the neighbors have requested. The, some of those items that he has agreed to are listed as conditions, that could be listed as conditions, but he has gone over and above what he has, what the city ordinance is required, and has gone over and above the typical request of, of the developer. And again, I can't remember ever spending this much effort, ever having a client that has spent this much effort and energy into addressing neighborhood concerns. has spent this much effort and energy into addressing neighborhood concerns. There are a number of reasons that you should affirmatively vote and approve this conditional zoning on the six and a half acres. And as Ms. Nelson has pointed out, and let me take a second, step back just a little bit. The city staff that we have has just been outstanding to work with, not only on this request, but all the requests, not only at the technical review committee level, but at all the planning levels. And I certainly think that I should say something about that, because they have worked very, very diligently to address every question and concern that we have posed to them. But the sound reasons for your approval is that it's, as Ms. Nelson said, is a logical extension of the existing zoning across the street. That's a concept that you have used on numerous occasions. It's a sound land planning principle. Secondly, as she has also indicated, is it is consistent with a long-range plan along University Drive as a mixed-use development, providing for business, conditional business, conditional office, and the residential buffer zone that we have created. Thirdly, it has a strong staff recommendation, and they are the trained professionals that we as taxpayers pay to make sure that, in fact, things, developments are developed in accordance with the highest and strictest standards. Ms. Nelson indicated TRC approval, Technical Review Committee, and I've referred to that, and they recommended it as well, but I consider that part of the staff's strong recommendation. You have the overwhelming recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it was not unanimous, but it was overwhelming. Fifth, this is outstanding effort on behalf of the applicant, if not really over-the-top protection for the residential neighbors. This is very reminiscent to me of when the shopping center was approved at the northwest corner of Huffman Mill Road and Church Street years ago. It's comparable, but I think that Mr. Tam and his company are going over and beyond that. Six, it's the highest and best use of the property. I know that's not necessarily the pivotal principle in land planning, but I would think that with the commercial immediately across the street, it would be very difficult for this parcel to be developed as an R-15 tract, which it is. It's not sound planning to have something zoned in a category that it would not be used. Ancillary to that highest and best use, clearly it will increase the tax base for adware and tax purposes, and it will increase it for sales tax purposes. I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you might have, and if I can't answer, Mr. Tam is here as well. If someone were to speak against it, which I had anticipated, I would like a moment or two of rebuttal.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Brown before we open it up to public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Obviously, this is a public hearing. Anyone on this side that would like to speak? Anyone on this side would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first, I wanted to thank you for your indulgence. This thing has been postponed repeatedly as the parties have attempted to reach some suitable resolution that both accommodate the needs of the developer and the residents of Glenwood Acres whom I represent. I would agree that Lawson Brown and Mr. Tam have met with us extensively in an attempt to try to work this out. Efforts to try to work the final details of this out even made for a very interesting Labor Day holiday that did not include cookouts for some of us. I would say this, that one thing that is a pivotal element of this project is that buffer that's there. It's the R-15 buffer, but it's not being subject to rezoning. And I would agree that Mr. Tam has done quite a few things with respect to the property that's being rezoned and placing conditions on it. As you may recall, when we had our previous hearing scheduled, the delay there was that we needed to get a document signed. I understand perfectly that the document I'm about to reference has absolutely nothing to do with your zoning decision this evening. The document in question was a set of restrictive covenants, private restrictive covenants that would have been placed on that R-15 land to provide the neighbors with some assurances as to what kind of development would ultimately be placed there. I had obtained the signatures for the various residents of Glenwood Acres, some of whom reside out of state, and it did come to my attention that contrary to my clients' expectations as set forth in that agreement, it would not be possible for Mr. Tam to deliver me those restrictive covenants this evening. I would note that Mr. Tam does not own the R-15 land that's there. That land is owned by concept builders, and Jimmy Collins' signature is the signature that is needed to place the restrictive covenants on that property. I think that Mr. Tam is an honest and decent person. I have no reason to doubt anything that he would tell me, but I am always enormously concerned when one person tells me that they can assure me that another person, after reviewing a document with council, will sign it. That is the reason why I wanted the document delivered to me upon the successful rezoning of the project. Because I do not have that document in hand, I have no way to assure my clients that that property that is the closest to theirs, and in fact was the reason that their protest petition was defeated, is going to be restricted in any way. I know of no way whether, you know, to assure my clients that that's going to be delivered. So because of the absence of that document, we are unable to lend our support to this particular rezoning at this time.
Now, if I understand, that's not really, that's not part of the...
I understand. Absolutely. Is that correct? Absolutely, absolutely. That's absolutely correct. I just wanted to make it clear that that was the one reason that we can't support it, that we, we had addressed very well with Mr. Tam and Lawson Brown the various conditions that would be on the project out there. And the last puzzle piece that we needed, totally independent from what you gentlemen are dealing with, was a set of private restrictions, so we at least knew what was going to be within the buffer. And that was the reason for the delay that they weren't in hand. The last time we met, I don't have them in my hand now, and they need to be signed by a third party, and I just can't assure my clients that someone else is going to sign something.
Ms. Nelson, show us, show us the area, please.
It remains R-15, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Do you want a larger area?
I just want to see the exact area of the R-15 that he's talking about.
And, Mr. Mayor, it's the R-15 buffer that's closest to the residence that's there.
So what you're saying tonight is the R-15 that's highlighted there with R-15 stated in it is not Mr. Tam's property, it's Mr. Collins' property. So therefore, he can't speak for Mr. Collins, is basically what you're saying.
Well, he, Mr. Tam has assured us that he's going to get Mr. Collins' signature on these restrictions, however, I can't...
If you had the signature, you'd be standing tonight speaking a different...
If, if I had the agreement that the parties had in place, and I just want to be candid with everyone, envisioned that I would be handed a copy of those restrictive covenants immediately upon your rezoning of the property, and I could go to the Register of Deeds tomorrow morning, record it, and I could tell them you're okay. That's what's going to happen over there. But I don't have that document in my hand, and it has to be signed by someone else. So I can't lend my support to the project. We touched the possibility, I think, and I don't know if Brown would disagree with me, of a postponement just for the purpose of getting this one piece of paper signed again, but I understand that Mr. Tam is under some development constraints which make that not possible for him. So that, we had worked through all the details, that was the one piece of paper that's there, and due to the fact I don't have that piece of paper, we're unable to lend our support to the rezoning this evening. And I don't know if anyone had any other questions?
Questions?
Well, I just, the, the property that is in question for the rezoning tonight, all the requests that you guys have had of Mr. Tam on that particular property that we're talking about, you're satisfied with that, other than this R-15 issue?
Well, let me, I do want to be completely candid with you in answering that question. There are three aspects to the agreement between the neighbors and Mr. Tam. One of them relates to the conditional rezoning, which you're correct. Those things that touch, concern, and relate to this property have, I think, in large part been addressed. The other is what would happen with the buffer? That's the private restrictions that I don't have in front of me, and I can't record...
That another landowner would control.
Exactly. And the last one would relate to certain assurances relating to the integrity of the water that's out there. That's a private agreement, too, that has nothing to do with you folks, but that's something that's there. It's just I don't have the restrictive covenants, and they're important because you're talking about the piece of land that's the buffer, that is the one closest to their neighborhood.
But, Mr. Kallo, it's already zoned R-15, is it not?
It is zoned R-15.
And so therefore, they're pretty much assured that if they were going, if this buffer was ever going to be contemplated to be used for something other than what's allowed in R-15, they would have to come back in front of this board, is that correct?
You are exactly right. I think that the restrictions that were contemplated would provide some assurances to the nature of what kind of R-15 development would happen within that area. And we were happy with the restrictive covenants that we were, we were able to work through. Regrettably, Mr. Tam is not the person that can sign those.
Does Mr. Tam have an option on this property? Is that what's going on here?
All I know of, and I certainly cannot, he may, the only thing that we know is, is near about the time that we filed our protest petition, it was conveyed from Mr. Tam's LLC to concept builders, and that was in part one of the reasons that our protest petition kind of went down in flames, is because you had the big buffer there, and of course you had an intervening landowner there, too. But that's where we're at. You know, I want to be entirely open and candid with you. If you have any other questions about where we're at, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions, comments from council?
I have a question, Mayor. Is it your position that you cannot support it? Does that mean you are opposed to it?
I will say we cannot support it.
Any other questions? I'm sure you'll be back in just a second. Anyone else that would like to speak on this topic?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you, sir. Mr. Brown, how about bring a little clarification in reference to R-15, and Mr. Collins, and Mr. Tam, in reference to this property?
Yes, sir. The city code allows a applicant to file for zoning if they have an interest in the land. Mr. Tam's company has a contract of purchase with Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins signed the zoning application. So, yes, he has an interest in the property. What Mr. Ta, what Mr. Kallo has referred to, it relates to the residential portion of the property, but we're providing the buffering on the property in question. As you know, the banking environment has changed for builders, developers. There is an appeal period of 60 days after this council makes a decision in which a property owner can appeal this decision to the Superior Court. In order for Mr. Tam to get his financing through traditional banking channels, he's got to be able to get title insurance, and he has to have an affirmative endorsement, American Land Title Association that the lawyers sitting up there are familiar with, that basically ensures over any zoning contingency. That means that expiration has got to expire. Mr. Col, Mr. Tam is fully agreeable and has executed the agreement, but with the neighbors, the hang-up is, in fact, the restrictive covenant Mr. Kallo referred to. So it would have to be a simultaneous delivery and closing, et cetera. That's not a zoning consideration, but that's the, I'm addressing the pragmatic concern that we have. Mr. Tam is totally agreeable to do everything he has said in the agreement that we got yesterday afternoon and filed for him about 5:30. We've been working on it for months, and I would submit probably years with the neighbors. So that's what we find ourselves.
So the idea is, is that you clock in, when he gets the deed, he clocks it in, and right behind it, you clock in the restrictive covenant?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's because it has to be a simultaneous exchange there at the closing?
That's correct.
Okay.
So what's, what's confusing about this to the other side?
That, that Mr. Tam may not close, and that this property is zoned, at which point they would have the right to sue him under the agreement. But here again, we've created an R-15 buffer. If someone steps in Mr. Tam's place and wants to close and develop the property that's before you tonight, the six and a half acres has got to be developed in accordance with the specific conditional zoning that hopefully you will vote affirmatively tonight. And I can assure you, Mayor, members of the council, that the agreement that Mr. Tam has with the neighbors goes way beyond anything that you've seen, and we can get into the...
I don't think, I don't think that's necessary, but, you know, I'm trying to make sure that I understand the concerns that Mr. Kallo has presented.
Absolutely.
And we've got two lawyers here on this council that I'm sure understands a lot better than I do, but if it's, if it's R-15 and Mr. Collins owns that property...
That is correct.
Obviously, Mr. Collins would come right in and build something and not need our approval. Is that correct?
At R-15...
At R-15.
At R-15 standards.
Right.
Which would require a public road, which Huffman Lane may or may not be. It would require a lot of 15,000 feet each lot. It would require, which is, well, which is what's required, it would require water and sewer, which it does not have at present. But if this development goes forward, there's some things that can happen there, too.
So in the other, I guess the last comment would be, we're basically betting on Mr. Tam to be true to his word versus the, what Mr. Kallo said, right? Is that, is whether he's going to purchase, bring closure, or not? And everything else has been satisfied from what I've heard tonight? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
But, but there still is, there still is another property transaction that's got to take place.
That is correct.
And, and we need to be mindful of the fact that anything can happen in those particular instances. And, and I would get back to the fact that that's really got to come before this council anyway, if any changes are going to be made to that additional property, if any changes are going to be made. As it's zoned right now, it's, it's got a green light for whatever it's zoned for. Any changes or any deviations from that would have to come back before this board anyway.
And I point out, Mr. Butler and other members of the council, Mayor, this is not atypical of the transaction. I mean, we didn't close the 26 parcels with 65 parties at Alamance Crossing until you zoned the property, and then, conditionally, and then at that point, we had a closing. So the, you, you see our conditions, which again, I think are outstanding protections for the neighbors.
Good, good.
Mr. Brown, a way of clarification, on the map you presented, the R-15 is being an R-15 buffer, but I don't see anything in your conditions that are presented in our list of conditions that says that property will remain R-15. Perhaps you might want to, at least what I'm looking at that was in our agenda package does not say that.
I, I think, Mr. Bateman, that is correct. I had some discussion with staff about that. We're comfortable saying that will remain R-15. That's what we've agreed to with the neighbors, that it will...
The application was filed by Mr. Collins.
And by Mr. Tam.
Both of them filed, and he owns that property. Do you have the authority from Mr. Collins to agree to that condition on R-15?
Yes, sir, I do.
Then you're agreed with then to adding that as a condition to the rezoning document?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So the worst thing that could happen, this way it would be developed, something along the lines of an R-15, what, what can be done there, correct?
That is correct.
That was my earlier question.
Which can happen now.
Without us.
Which, there's no change.
Right.
Right.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown?
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I move to close the public hearing?
Anyone else that would like to speak? I'm sorry. Anyone else that would like to speak, I'm sorry? Yes?
Jonathan Carden, I live in the Abington Place subdivision 3739, Tartan Lane. I think what concerns me a little bit is that, just from a layman's point of view, that at some point, this R-15 land was used as something to stop the protest petition. And four years ago, I think it was, in that buffer zone, I believe Collins had proposed to develop a three-story condo building. It looks like an effort for that to maybe come back. Is a three-story condo building allowed in the R-15?
No. No, sir. According to Ms. Nelson? Is that correct?
It doesn't have special use permit.
It still has to come back in front of us.
As it stands, it's not...
It's permitted use with a special use permit.
Okay.
Before the Board of Adjustment?
For special use permit, yes.
It would not come back?
It would not be back here then.
That's correct.
Unless it was...
Unless it's conditional.
Yeah.
So, his question was, it looks like to him that this is set up for Mr. Collins to come back with the three-story condos? Is that what you said?
Right, it was voted down.
So, the answer to that today is, no, it's not.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other one else that would like to speak?
May I move to close the public hearing?
Got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose?
Mayor, based on the situation that we've heard from both parties and the efforts that they've gone through to reconcile this situation and the recommendation of staff and P&amp;Z, I'd make a motion that we approve the development as requested.
Would you add to that motion, the condition that R-15...
With the condition of R-15 added to the application is Mr. Bateman and Mr. Lawson Brown.
And that helps protect, right, Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Let me just say, this is, this has been a drawn-out process, but let me, Mr. Kaloe, you have done, I'm aware within your private agreement, okay? You've done a good job for your clients. Mr. Brown has done a good job in bringing his client to the table to accommodate. There are, these are all balancing issues for this city council and when you, the two, it makes you kind of proud of the profession when we are the grease instead of the grit and the wheels. And both of you have served as the grease and the wheels in this situation. I think you've come to a good accommodation. It makes for a good balance that this, I think this council can very readily approve and I appreciate y'all's efforts in doing so.
Any other comments? Got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose? Okay. You got a statement of consistency as well?
I'll do it.
Can you read?
City Council finds that the broad statement is consistent, that the city has brought in comprehensive land use plan, and that this action is reasonable and in the public interest, and that the amendment is compatible with existing land use and will provide for the adoptive reuse of property being rezoned.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose? Yes, sir. That brings us to new business. The city council considered approving a request from Piedmont Authority for regional transportation in the amount of $217,000 for Section 5307 funds for fiscal year 2015 and forward to the Burlington Graham MPO for its endorsement. This time we recognize Mr. Kirkman. Mr. Kirkman?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Tonight, the request is from Piedmont Authority Regional Transportation for use of 5307 funds. Burlington is the lead planning agency for the Burlington Graham Metropolitan Planning Organization. And so, we receive these requests and have to pass them along with our endorsement to the MPO, should we deem that to be the case. Let me just give you a quick background about 5307 funds. These are the federal funds that are available for transit systems. They are allocated and apportioned by the federal government through the Federal Transit Administration. Those are designated to the state of North Carolina for our area because we're under 200,000, our urbanized area, through the Department of Transportation Planning or Public Transit Division. Again, we are the lead planning agency, so we receive requests such as this and from Park, which we process and request to the MPO for action. Just as a reminder, the fixed route system upfront capital costs and the first year of operation costs were approved by the MPO last month. So, that's very important to know, those 5307 funds have been established for those portions of our system. The Park request before us tonight, in previous years, they were funded at $100,000 out of 5307, which allowed them to run one bus from Winston-Salem to Chapel Hill in Durham, and they were stopping in our urbanized area at the Graham Park and Ride Lot. They also stopped in Gibsonville, the TA truck stop, not showing on this graphic. The expansion that's part of the request that's before you is for 217,000 5307 funds, which allows Park to run two buses. They would begin at the Park Hub in their area and they would still go to Chapel Hill, but they would also continue to stop at the TA, stop in Gibsonville, the Graham Park and Ride Lot. But there's also a proposed Park and Ride Lot in Meven that is currently being vetted by Park and Associates. So, that particular Park and Ride Lot would have a connection to the Triangle Transit Authority. And you would also see an increased frequency, considering you have additional buses, of trips, to allow not only medical trips, but also commuter trips. Just to give you a brief summary, 5307 funds as best we understand it, and you notice here, I emphasize estimate only because we're working off of figures that we're getting from the Public Transit Division, so all those are estimates coming from those folks in Raleigh. For the fiscal year 15, you can see that the 5307 funds currently available are those that are the sum of fiscal year 13 and fiscal year 14 apportionments, which is approximately 3.1 million. That's what we're looking at currently that we're working out of. You subtract from that the portion of the transit system upfront initial cost, that's what was approved by the MPO last month. Leaves you a balance of 660,000. So, that's the balance that we're looking at in terms of whether or not we want to recommend to the MPO to approve the Park request. So, once you subtract that amount, you still end up with a balance of 400,000. We don't necessarily foresee any additional requests that I know of in Mike Nun, with the MPO, for this particular fiscal year. There are some agencies trying to get their grantee status approval. ACTA, Alamance County Transportation Authority is trying to get theirs. Orange County Transportation folks are trying to get theirs. So, there's some folks working towards that, that in future years, we would probably see those additional requests. But in terms of this request that has come to us from Park, for this particular fiscal year, we feel like there's adequate funds. And this is a one-year request for funds, not a multiple year. And I included another section here for future years, which helps you to see how 5307 funds may look. Again, these are estimated funds going forward. We would estimate an apportionment, hopefully no later than next spring, of 1.8 for fiscal year 15. And if you subtract out what we've been approved for the MPO for our first year of the transit system cost, that still leaves a balance of over 600,000, estimated that these other agencies would be able to compete for or make requests for through the MPO. So, all that said, staff would recommend that we approve Park's request in the amount of 217,000 for fiscal year 2015 and forward to the Burlington Graham MPO for its endorsement. And Scott Ryan, who is Executive Director with Park, is also here this evening to try to address any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments to Mr. Kirkman?
I have one question. I see Orange County's on here. Is Orange County in our area?
They're in our area.
That we would have to fund with 5307 funds? No, yes?
Orange County is in our MPO.
Okay.
As you recall, all Alamance County is in our MPO and then a small portion in Gifford County, a small portion in Orange County where Meven is located.
Yeah, okay. So, if the Park and Ride, if we should happen to put a Park and Ride Lot out there, where would it go, in Orange County side or the Alamance County side, or wherever you get the...
Looking at Alamance County side, we've looked at, narrowed down, and we shared this at the MPO meeting this past month, but we've narrowed down to right across from where the Walmart is. If that helps, Catty Corner to where the Sheetz, there's a landowner that is actually open to the idea of subdividing some of his property. We've met with the city of Meven. I've also reviewed that with them, so it would be on the Alamance County side.
Okay, but the Orange County side, since the Orange County is starting their own transit system down there, wouldn't they be able to fund some of it as well?
For this Park and Ride Lot?
Yeah.
Yes, actually, we're working that with Triangle Transit specifically, as well as with the city of Meven for any cost overruns that we have. We have some grant funds that were appropriated to Park that goes back to 2010, if I'm not mistaken, if I have not misspoken on that. But that also ties back to when we had American Recovery Reinvestment Act funds. Came through the MPO, that's what built the Park and Ride Lot in Graham, was American Recovery Reinvestment Act that was 100% through USDOT. And we have 5307 funds that are also appropriated for that Park and Ride facility that we're endeavoring right now in Meven.
The 5307 funds that we give to ACTA, they're going to look here to do $217,000 to Park. Does that mean that ACTA could claim a bit more of that?
Talking about Alamance County Transportation Authority?
Yes, they currently don't get any 5307.
They're working towards that.
I think they're 5311, is that right? It's what, they're currently under their...
They still have some 5307s in there, too.
Well, in the future, there's a good shift.
And I, I mean, I think I'm following the thought process, the council member faucet here. You know, I personally would like to get some additional data on some of the financial breakdowns of what we're looking at with regards to our commitments and what's going to be coming down the pipe. I understand we're theoretically $400,000 of a balance sitting there. But there could be other requests. I'm not sure I totally have my thought process around what we're spending initially and exactly how that's being allocated myself with the 5307 funds. I would prefer a little bit of time to get with you guys and go over those numbers independently.
Mr. Butler, I'd be more than happy to try to give you some details on the process, the flow of the funding.
The flow of the funding, I'm fully aware of. What I'm not aware of is exactly what our commitments are with regards to where we're at with our fixed transit system.
Well, with our fixed transit system, MPO has approved the funding for the upfront costs in the first year of operations.
And that number was...
The number you showed us earlier.
Yeah.
Are we 100% sure that that's what we're looking at? I mean, is that the commitments from contracts, have we...
That is based on the estimates that have come through our efforts to date.
Yeah.
So, 100% sure of our estimate.
But the estimates...
I can tell you that.
Yeah, that's my concern, is it's an estimate. And I mean, and I agree that the money's there and I certainly would support the effort, but I for one would like to get a little closer to the final outlay of what we're looking at, as opposed to the estimates that we have before us.
I can tell you, we're comfortable that what we have been approved through the MPO is sufficient for what we're wanting to do with our transit system. I can tell you that, and Scott can speak to this, Park is currently running, and if TAC members heard this at the last MPO meeting, running this route right now, but at some point here in the near future, they do need an answer, or else they're going to have to stop service with the Park route, is that not correct?
That's correct.
What's your timeline, Scott?
Well, that's a very good question, but Mayor, honestly, as a board member, we have this appropriated and we have this allocated in the Park budget. And of course, we're operating in a new fiscal year. And so, I brought this up at the MPO level because we are now in September and we've been working through the process. And yes, absolutely certainly recognize the commitments that are being made with the city, endeavoring into a new area of public service and public transit. But I know that I have to bring this back up to the Park Board. And I feel, honestly, I feel part of that has already passed that point. Because we are in September, we do not have any funds that are supporting this particular corridor of service. They have been federal funds. We have failed in years past to try to receive any funds from Alamance County, but those are our fund sources that we have available in our legislation. So, I'm going to have to bring this up at our next board meeting and let the Park Board decide as to whether or not we continue with unknowns or whether or not we have to go ahead and publicly announce the cancellation of that service.
Scott Ryan, could you, certainly with Councilman Butler and any other council members that are over the course of the next two weeks?
Absolutely can, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'll get my answers. I mean, there's a couple of different venues I want to look at and I completely sympathize with your need for an answer right now, but like you said, it's been before your board and you guys have been studying this for a while. It came on our agenda this week, so...
I understand.
So, I personally would need some time to vet through this to be sure that I've got a full understanding of what we're looking at.
And I understand exactly what you're saying because you're absolutely right. We have your upfront capital cost, I'll give you an example, upfront capital cost. And Mayor, this is something that we can certainly bring up at our board meeting next week or at the, you know, Finance Committee meeting later this week. Your upfront capital costs are going to be the biggest hit that you have on your system.
That's right.
450, 500,000, 475, you don't know. We have a bid that's on the street. Those are coming to us by the end of the month. We're doing, we're taking the lead on that for the city of Burlington, Greensboro, High Point, Concord, as well as Park. Five-year contract, we're planning to take that in front of the Park Board for adoption toward a contractor at their October meeting. That will give us the final determination, final say-so, or we'll have the final view, what are the capital costs going to be for those 35 and 40-foot buses that support your system, as well as the other ones that are part of that contract. And that'll answer that first question, is are these the best numbers? And really, until we get those bids back, nobody knows. Because we don't have anything at the state level as far as a statewide contract. We have other examples that are out there across the country, but you don't know because it's a competitive process and that's why you go through it, because those manufacturers are competing. There's essentially three manufacturers in the country nowadays in the United States and so we know which ones are going to be showing the interest. But until we open up those bids later this month, we won't actually know what the actual costs are going to be. We feel very confident that they're going to be in the range that you have programmed within your budget, because we know just based on history what the other vehicle costs have come in for other procurements, so we feel confident that those numbers are good. But yes, to actually have the exacts, like Mr. Butler was wanting to know, we'll have to wait and see what that is. But again, Mayor, while that's something that we will have to explain back to the Park Board and just be realistic with regards to our financial stewardship of how long we will be able to operate without those fund sources being in place.
You think we'll be ready for this topic between you two at the next meeting?
I would be. Now, I just want to be real clear, too. The $100,000 that we've given in the past, that's now 217, but Nolan, you indicated that that was to help with the Meven Park and Ride Lot? No, or not?
That's just to add the additional bus.
The additional bus for that, okay.
There is an option included in your memo, which is to continue funding Park at the $100,000, which I think suffices to make sure they can continue operations. And I think would suffice for Park. And Scott, I don't want to speak for you this time. That is another option.
It is. The difference between the two, Mr. Butler, is that at the $100,000, we're able to meet up with Triangle Transit one time. Essentially, with the additional federal funds, we essentially are going from a service that operates presently today, one time eastbound, one time westbound. With the additional funds, operating two buses, then we're essentially looking at four individual trips eastbound, four individual trips westbound at those designated stops. And that Triangle Transit connectivity between our two regional systems would be twice. And that's twice morning as well as PM for those work commuters. And we all know, you all know, in your own positions, how many travelers you have going eastbound, westbound for your commuters, things of that nature. And we recognize that here as well, within what we've seen over in the past year and a half at Park. here as well, within what we've seen over in the past year and a half at Part, where we have basically gone from presently at 11 van pools that are coming out of Alamance County in less than two years, that is the largest growth that we've had in our van pool program since day one. Other largest county that we have is Surrey, and that's 15, but we have 11 van pools coming out of Alamance County, and that's a lot of commuters, a lot of commuters that are willing to actually try something different, and I think that's pretty much the biggest message that we can do.
Just to make sure I understand, your question was other commitments that the city may have in reference to 5307?
Yeah, just, just where we're at with regards to our own, our own fixed transit system and?
Plus others.
Plus any potential others.
Okay, all right, is that the same for you?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, any other questions or comments for Scott or Nolan?
Mr. Mayor, if those are the questions that councilmembers have, Mike Nunez of Elon, why he's not here, speaking to the Elon Council on Transit, Mike and Nolan can get with you guys, we'll sort of, the individual, what's the best time to go through this matter, if that's, if that's okay for everyone?
All right, so we're going to continue this until the next meeting?
September 16th, is that correct?
Yeah.
Very good, very good, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen.
Yes.
All right, public comments, we have one, Mr. John Black, welcome, Mr. Black, if you would state your name and address and your topic.
John Black, 734 Westbrook Drive in Burlington, and I'm here to ask about permission for having a beer garden at a Hope for Alzheimer's concert that is going to be held at Lake Kamac on October 4th. I apologize for bringing this to the council instead of going through the channel with the Recreation and Parks Commission. As a past chairman of that commission, I know how important it is to run things through the system. Unfortunately, we're at a time constraint as October 4th, and a publicity kind of calendar is around the corner. So basically, what we would like to do, as in the past where beer or wine in a controlled area, for example, City Park for the United Way fundraiser with the Lumpsters playing was offered, we also would like to do this at our fundraiser for Alzheimer's, it's called Hope on the Water, and in the 20-plus years that I've given time to the city in recreation and in planning and zoning, I usually talk of facts and figures, but tonight I'm talking from the heart, because I have seen what Alzheimer's has done in my family, and it's just something we're trying to raise as much money for, for the research into this dreaded disease. Once again, we're just looking to have beer and wine in a controlled area, wristbands, making sure that people are of the proper age, we understand that the insurance requirements that the city needs, we will be able to meet, we will be, it's just from 2:00, we'll cut off any sales at, say, 7:00. The concert is made up of five bands in this area that will start at 2:00 in the afternoon on Saturday, October 4th, they'll play a 45-minute set, there'll be a 30-minute break, then we go to the last band, which starts at 7:00, and once again, at that point, we would cut off sales, that band should be through by 7:45. During the 30-minute sets, there will be a live auction ongoing with items that have been donated to the Alzheimer's Association that we will have at this time. So basically, the setup will be at the Camp Green Leaves area of Lake Kamac, not near the water, apart from the water, separated by quite a distance, and I think that this should be pretty well attended, and we're, we're looking forward to raising money, we'll be charging $20 a car for people to come out to Lake Kamac, hopefully, we'll be able to showcase Lake Kamac to a lot of people that don't realize it's just a nine-minute drive away from Burlington, and a lot of people do not realize what a gem we have in Lake Kamac, we're hoping to showcase Lake Kamac with this concert, and we would hope that the council would approve this recommendation, request from us. I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can, and I have people from the committee who, if I can't, I'll ask them.
Do you have support?
Yes, wave support.
I think, I mean, this is an unusual request, just especially during the public comment period, so I think I heard you say that the reason you're doing this is strictly for a timing issue?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, it's the fact that October 4th is right around the corner, we need to go ahead and get our publicity out, if we're going to offer the beer garden, then we would like to go ahead and, and, you know, promote that. As you well know, any of you that's run for office, you don't wait till the last minute, we, we were kind of pushed into this time schedule, so this is why, as I said, I would have assumed to gone through the, the correct channel, because serving as the chairman of that commission, I know, I know how important it is to go there, I'm not trying to circumvent them, but it's just a matter of timing.
Guys?
You, you guys are envisioning this to be something, you, you made reference to United Way and the Lumpsters, it's just going to be a very similar?
Very, absolutely, Mr. Butler, we're just going to have a small beer garden set up, we'll, you know, we'll predetermine age and all, wristband, limited sale, and we also, this gives us more control as to not allow coolers in, we can just say no coolers allowed, so, you know, if we, if we have something like this, we can do that much easier.
So don't we have a, didn't, don't we have a procedure all in place now?
I'll go ask Harold then.
Can we, can, if we put this on for the next meeting, because that can give you enough advertising time for the 16th?
That's my problem, Mr. Huffman, we, we really need to get this out now, because, like I said, October 4th is just about a month away, and the sooner we can start advertising this, the more money we can hope to raise for Alzheimer's.
If you expedite this process here as far as the paperwork, we want to follow the procedures that we have, you know, I, I don't think anybody on this council, we all agree with this, with the, with the calls, certainly, and, and understand how things creep up on you, how can we best accommodate that but stay in line with the, with our policies and procedures?
Well, obviously, there's a special use permit that the council approved, the process to go through, and I, as much as I've had family members involved in this, is I've been very honest with Mr. Black, concern I've got on this is, and I don't have a specific answer, but we, well, how far do we go with the allowance of beer and wine in our park system? And, and that, and we're going, this is, the lake area, I'm sure he's talking about $20 a car, I'm sure the people that come in to be using the lake will be allowed to come in as a regular, we're not closed the operation of the lake down that day, I'm sure of that, but the question is, you know, just, you know, we've, we've expanded this in the downtown area, on the streets, in the depot area, when I had brown hair, I came up here one time, our first effort with alcohol, and the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Commission was to allow something like this at Lake McIntosh, and at that point in time, the council allowed everything we've got now, except with, you may recall this, except at Lake McIntosh for control. We made one venture at City Park, and I, I think looking back now, Tony, you may agree with this, we feel like that might not have been the thing to go forth with, is that fair to say?
That's correct.
So control, and I don't have the answer for control, I think what John is talking about, the beer garden is certainly better than just a roaming use of alcohol, if you restrict it, much like the Juno, or the other areas around the state have, when you have specific areas, alternative measures, but, you know, I, I don't, it, it depends, and I know John had talked about this earlier with, with Tony about another issue out at Lake Kamac, and they've had some conversation concerning the application permit, but I believe the application permit was put in for a process to protect the city in going through things, so I, I, you know, I think that's, that was about sort of the marching orders we were given by council, that's that.
So the permit's already been approved to have the event, is that right here, or not?
The event's been scheduled for, it was actually scheduled before the permit process even took place, prior to July 1st.
Okay, so the, the event was scheduled prior to us having a permit in place, which is the process, which is fairly new for every entity that's, that's trying to do something. I know we try to communicate these things, so, I mean, it would seem odd to me that we would require a permit for half of something when we didn't require it to get it approved. I'm not sure I'm real clear on, on all that anyway, but. What you're saying, Harold, is we should not have done this at City Park?
Well, this is just one person speaking, I, I'm not sure that's what, this is, this is a pure council's call going forward, but I'm not sure, you know, at, at some point in time, there's going to have to be some definitions of how far we extend the sale of alcohol, public properties. Now, City Park is to me is even more and more sensitive maybe than this area may be. John used to work at Camp Green Leaves, Camp Green Leaves obviously is not, and is only a six-week camp in the summer for development and disabled children, but I, I really, what I've got to say now is, once we go out, out there, once we start that, then there's certainly then, you know, you're going, you stand to have requests for Lake McIntosh or any of these other parks.
Is there any particular reason you chose that venue?
Quite frankly, yes, because of the Green Leaves venue, the way it's set up, you have a basketball court, a long sloping area, that plus the fact that, in discussion with, with Tony, and like I said, I chaired Recreation and Parks, I wasn't even aware of that part of Lake Kamac, and I've announced the triathlon out there for five years, but I just never quite saw that part, you kind of drive by it and you don't notice it, until you pull up there and look, it is, it is quite a jewel in the crown there at Lake Kamac, so one of the other reasons is to highlight this so other people can come out there, see this venue, and perhaps utilize it more than it's being utilized now.
It's a, it's a nice area, it's a, it's a, y'all have been, there's a rolling grass area, no, no question, you have parking out front that people could park, I know John's already talked about, obviously, there's no lights out there, portable lighting, portable sound system has to be taken out there, because it's, it's rural in nature, you know, it's, Tony's right, he had talked to John earlier before July 1 about this, you know, but, but I, I just, I have to make, I have to make council aware of the permit situations in place, and I think the key here is, you know, do you feel comfortable taking alcohol to another park, public park facility?
Are you concerned with the precedent here, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
I think in the staff's formulation of the permit policy, one of the objectives was to present to the council a complete application that had been vetted for security and vetted for insurance purposes and control, so we reduced, you know, the city has insurance and they have insurance, but you really owe it to the public to take the most appropriate steps you can take to ensure that you don't have a tragic accident arriving out of permit to sell alcohol, and I think that was one of the guiding principles that the staff looked at when they tried to formulate the process for these permits, and that that would be, would be a concern to approving it without knowing what the risks are and what the, just what you're getting into.
So what you're saying, the best we could hope for is to bring it back on to 26?
Yes.
16.
I mean, 16, excuse me, is that, that's the best we can?
Yes, sir, but I think that would be the staff recommendation, Harold.
And John's done wonderful things with this, this is nothing against anybody involved in this thing, but it, it's, it's, the alcohol thing puts a whole different perspective when we, when we start reserving facilities. Just now, as we found out, when we used to have, a commonplace thing was the, the portable bouncing machines, now we find out we can't get insurance across the country for those anymore. So it's, it's a moving target here on these special events, guys, it's a, it's an awful lot of time goes into trying to process and vet this thing out to, to try to provide the city the best protections we can.
Well, with the permit process that we have, and the fact that they requested this venue before that was completely in place, it sort of puts them kind of in twixt and between.
It does, yeah, it does.
And I understand the thought process about precedent, I, I was not aware that maybe some of the events that we've had in the past, we were sort of second guessing whether or not we should have done that, but with the precedent, we've, we have established a precedent, I think what we did with this new process was to try to vet through each and every one to be sure that they were certainly capable of doing, and if that's, this one sort of falls right there in that area where, before everybody just sort of come up and said, hey, we got this event, can we do this? And, and we, we would try to assist if, if possible, so, you know, I hate to see an event that kind of started all of a sudden get derailed, but at the same time, I understand that there's a process that we need to do, and it's the next meeting.
Staff will work with, with, no matter what council comes up with, and Tony's already been involved, Tony's been a primary person, it's not been Ms. Wolf, has it, it's been you?
It's been me and the lake staff, primarily the lake staff, Harold, but, but me, too. We started with, with Mr. Black, he had an event he was going to hold last fall as a fundraiser, and that event didn't happen, but this one's been scheduled for a good while. Everything in that special event process, permit process, we can handle except alcohol, that's, that's the one thing that we don't have the, the authority to, to grant, whether they can sell alcohol.
And I would like to add that the city, we always get insurance.
Sure.
To get insurance.
Sure.
The city is special insured.
Absolutely.
Irregardless of whether alcohol was there or not, if alcohol was there, there's, there's additional liability insurance that we want to see, that's a layer of protection.
Sure, and he said that earlier, that he would have that certificate of that.
We've discussed that third, and Mr. Black's actually out of the insurance industry, too, so he understands.
Okay, so, correct me if I'm wrong, am I hearing the 16th?
Now, John, you gotta have to tell us if this can be too late or not.
Well, quite frankly, you know, I'm at the, the will and pleasure of the, the council, we'd much prefer to go ahead and start our publicity now in trying to, to raise the money. I, I went out to Ocala Lake this past Saturday for the John Coltrane Jazz and Blues Festival, it was actually on the lake, at the lake's edge, they were selling beer and wine, $3 the entire day, over, over 8,000 people there, we're not looking for anything in that type of numbers, and we're trying to, you know, we just want to have a small, small area. I just, you know, just was hoping that we could get this on, because I can't stress enough that we need to get our advertising out there in order to, to make this happen and raise as much money as we can, but once again, it is not my call.
And I will say that the alcohol sales will have to be through a licensed vendor, it cannot be through John's community or anything.
That's right, absolutely.
I would feel comfortable, Mr. Black, by bringing it back at the next council meeting. I'm, I'm sorry because Alzheimer's affected my family, but to, to be I'm sorry because Alzheimer's affected my family, but to be fair, I think the next council meeting would be my vote.
Guys?
We continue this matter to September 16th meeting.
Second. Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, that gets us to City Council comments. A couple, Breakfast in Neverland, September 6th, from 8:30 to 11:00, at the Carousel in Burlington City Park. Get your tickets by calling Recreation and Parks, 222-5030. Free shred event, Saturday, September 13th, 2014, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00, at the Fire Police Training Center for Alamance County Residents. Carousel 14, the 2014 Carousel Festival, held 20th and 21st at Burlington City Park. Household hazardous waste collection at the Fire slash Police Training Facility, Saturday, October 18th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for Alamance County Residents. Any other comments from council? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one thing? I want to, we had a national softball tournament last weekend, it went very well. I want to thank Mr. Fossett for coming and representing the city and giving them the official welcome. And it was, it turned out real well. We had pretty good weather and 34 teams participating.
You think they may want me back again, Tony?
Absolutely.
I'm thinking not.
I think I did get it.
Any other comments from council? Next session, our next agenda items, a closed session, the city attorney hiring process.
Mr. Mayor, I guess to be allowed to recuse myself from this matter.
Okay.
Do we have a motion and a second on the recusal?
Have a motion? Recuse. Got a motion, a second. Can you? To recuse, Mr. Huffman? All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Okay. All right, I need a motion.
The, we've got closed session on the agenda. I've got a question with regards to that, and Mr. Bateman, maybe you can help me with this. Is, obviously, you were to meet and discuss the terms with the candidate. Is that what this closed session was in preparation for?
That is my understanding, Mr. Butler, yes.
Mayor, I don't have a problem with that being an open session. We gave Mr. Bateman some guidelines. I don't see a reason why we can't have those and hear what the results were on that with regards to it. I agree.
Any problems in that? Okay. I guess we need to vote on that, not to, how do we need to do that, Mr. Bateman? We need to vote on it to do it in open session?
Well, it requires a motion to go into closed session, so if you're not going into closed session, no motion would be required.
Okay. All right. So with that being said, Mr. Bateman?
Mr. Mayor, at the conclusion of your last meeting, I was instructed to contact Mr. David Huffman to determine whether or not we could negotiate acceptable compensation package for his services as city attorney. I was given certain parameters by the city council, including a wage area that we could discuss. I was also instructed specifically about the benefit levels that could be offered. And this was, obviously, this was an arms-length discussion because there were some desires to modify the benefit section, considering the long source of Mr. Huffman. However, my authority did not allow me to negotiate that. But based on that, I did negotiate with him, based on the salary of $135, with base entry benefits package to be offered for zero service. With the beginning date of October 1st and a council review after six months, Mr. Huffman has confirmed to me that those terms are acceptable to him. And if it's acceptable to the council, we will commit those to a letter agreement. And that that does require council action now.
Right. Questions or comments to Mr. Bateman?
So the salary was certainly within the guidelines that we...
Instructed.
Instructed. And the benefit level as well in the six-month review. So basically, that met the guidelines.
Yes, it did.
So all of those.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Bateman?
And Mr. Huffman was in acceptance of all those?
Yes. No reservations.
Okay. Based on that, those were the guidelines that we gave Mr. Bateman. If those were acceptable to Mr. Huffman, I'd make a motion that we approved the candidate that we asked him to negotiate with, David Huffman, to start a city attorney effective 10-1 under conditions that were set for.
Second. Got a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose?
No.
Mr. Butler, let me add that prior to that becoming effective, of course, Mr. Huffman will have to offer his resignation as a member of council. And that should be done prior to October 1st.
Okay. You will relay that to him, is that correct?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Any other action or any other comments from council? Otherwise, we entertain a motion to adjourn.